Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of community area interest, general nature thereof? Seeing none, are motion to accept the agenda?
That the committee members accept the agenda of the committee of the whole on Wednesday, November 18th, 2020.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. No delegations, moving on to staff reports, administration department, respectful conduct policy, I believe we have a motion?
Yes, that the committee of the whole receives staff report AD 202017 and that the committee of the whole directs staff to develop a respectful conduct policy to be brought back to council for approval.
Okay, you taking this one?
Yes, um, so as council is aware, back in early 2020, we had a bit of an incident here at the township office, as well as ongoing issues we've had since the COVID with some conduct we've had here in the township office, as well as the other offices. We've also received some emails, not respectful emails from different people in the community, as well as other people, and I think it's time that we put together a respectful conduct policy. We do have a workplace violence and harassment policy, but it does only speak to employee relations and not to relations between the staff and residents. I've been in communication with the ombudsman and they've recommended also that we have this policy as as an ongoing thing for staff to be able to mitigate any risks, as well as deal with any conduct that may not be good.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions from members of council? Go ahead, Councilman Manley and Councilor Noble?
Yeah, just, just more of a comment. I think it's a good idea that definitely we should have this or whatever. Sarah, can you give us, just give us a, a general feeling or whatever? This is, this is not a, this is not happening rapidly in North Glengarry, is it?
No, I wouldn't say so, but right now staff don't have a policy or procedure to follow to, to respond. So if we're receiving vexatious or frivolous emails or someone comes in the front office here, staff certainly respond in the way that they would think to respond, but there wouldn't be a policy on what we could do to mitigate the person from, you know, coming back or saying to them, you know, your behavior is not acceptable. We do have a zero tolerance sign in the front counter area, but this would apply to all interactions. So whether someone is being not respectful to a plow driver or somebody who works at Rare, it's not only just the township office that it would apply to, to be everyone. It's just a tool for staff to know and also for the community to know. And I'm going to do a little bit of a social media campaign, just to make sure that people understand. Certainly in the wake of COVID, there are people's not are not always patient. So just a reminder to people to take a breath and relax before they come in.
Perfect, thank you. Perfect, Councilor Noble?
Well, I'm curious what the options are. I mean, unfortunately, we live in the time, not only of Karens, but of people who feel they deserve everything. And I haven't, I've never heard the line, I pay enough in taxes before in my life. And that's supposed to be the answer to why they're allowed to yell at you guys, yell at, like you say, the plow driver or constantly ask, well, how come? Well, how come? But I, but what are, what are your options as far as, okay, if you get a nasty email, obviously if there's violence or whatever, you're allowed to go the OPP. But I mean, if someone's asking the same thing or come in, you know, four days in a row, what are you thinking that you can, can do to them?
I think it just gives us the ability to be able to communicate to them to say that their behavior is not acceptable. Right now, we haven't defined what acceptable behavior is, although we can all say what a reasonable person would do in this situation. We just need a policy for staff to say, you know, it's not okay that I receive seven emails from you a day about the same thing, that we can send back an email to them or, or have like a rule to say, we will not reply to those emails which we've already replied to at nauseam. It doesn't say, it's not to say that we're taking away the ability for residents to, if they have put through a complaint or something into one of our staff members, that they can't escalate that up. That's still for, for them to do. It's just those situations where staff right now are not knowing how to reply because they don't have a policy to say, you are not in compliance with this policy. So like I said, although there's Bill 168, there's the, the workplace violence and harassment policy, those policies are very specific to interactions between staff and not interactions between staff with residents.
Something, so basically they can respond without getting into trouble?
Yes, they can respond with all the, you know, although I wouldn't want someone to just send an email back to a resident shutting them down after two, you know, two questions. It would be an interaction between, let's say, Minnick in the front reception areas, has someone come in every day to bother her? She would then meet with myself or Kim and say, you know, as per the policy, I don't think that this should be happening. And then either Minnick or myself or Kim would send a reply to the person to say, you know, your behavior is not welcome in the township office. And there would be steps. So if they're, you know, if they're not really complying with that, then we'd have other things that we could do from there.
Perfect. Any other questions? I think it's a great policy, so I'm glad it's being brought forward. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Moving on to number two, strategic plan update.
So that the council, or sorry, the committee of the whole receives staff report AD 2018 strategic plan update for information purposes only. So this is just an update for council on the strategic plan. Certainly, it's been a while since I provided an update of where we were at. I am happy to report that we, you know, even with everything that's happened in the last six months, we are making some progress and staff provided updates where they are with everything. Now you'll note that there are a couple of things that are on hold, but certainly with the marketing development plan and that strategy being finished, that did move us forward in the great, right direction with a lot of the different things on the, on the strategic plan. Also, I know that staff are still working towards some policy development and as, you know, our favorite topic, the tree canopy bylaw is, is moving forward as well as some of the other things that are in there. So, so the lagoon, the lagoon upgrade and those things are sort of moving forward as much as they can. So it was just an update to council to let you know where we're at and also to give you an idea of some of the changes in the timelines.
Okay, questions from members of the committee? Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I think we've made great progress with a lot of this stuff. You know, I think to begin with, council identified some really important priorities in the strategic plan and, and, and they've been, they've been ones that we've actually been able to take a big bite into and that's thanks to staff and staff's commitment to moving these things forward. And I just think we've made, made a lot of progress and I'm, I'm really happy to see it.
Yeah, I think that's a testament just to, you know, making yours, as opposed to always strategic plans seem to be pie in the sky items that we made these actionable items that we could actually complete within a four-year term. So I think, you know, I think everyone did a great job when we, when we put it together. So any other comments or questions from members of the committee? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Moving on to community services department, temporary conversion of the Maxwell and District Complex Arena Slab. We have a motion?
So that committee of the whole receives staff report CS 202016 and that the temporary conversion of the Maxwell District Sports, Sports Complex of the Arena Slab into a multi-sports surface continued for the foreseeable future and that staff continue to monitor ice demands and changes to the provincial and public health directives and communicate this information to council.
Thank you, welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as council knows, COVID-19 has really impacted our ice rentals. And as a result, the Maxwell complex was temporarily converted into a multi-sports pad. All signs seems to, seem to indicate that we're going to be continuing in the same direction for the next while. So staff would like the council to consider extending this temporary conversion for the time being. And as always, staff will continue monitoring the different conditions surrounding COVID-19 and will report back to council through the committee of the whole if there are any changes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And can you maybe give us an update on usership thus far?
So we actually have the stats in the work plan. So if Mr. Mayor permits, we'll speak to that at that time.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Williams?
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that, I know that Ann's going to speak to the numbers, but I just, I put a quick call into Jerome this morning and just to kind of get, get it from the horse's mouth. And he, he sounded pretty pleased about the usership of the facility. He didn't give me any numbers, but he said that pickleball is, is being very active. Tennis has, has been a pickup of tennis going on. He says that there's eight to 10 kids that come after school almost every day to play basketball. And he said, and the track is being well-used. And the interesting thing is, is that the, the Maxwell Manor normally would be hosting coffee groups for, for seniors at the Maxwell Manor every Monday morning, but they can't do that obviously during COVID. So they've made arrangements to be able to host these two, the men's coffee club and the women's coffee club in the community hall there. And they're, they're anywhere from five to 10, either men or women in their, in their groups that actually attend that. And so the, the community hall is being used for that. And then some of them then will, will, after they finish their coffee and their chat, then they'll go and they'll use the track and walk around the track. So it all is sounding very positive and, and Jerome was, was very positive about it all, too.
That's great. Thanks for that update, Deputy Mayor. Any further questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. All right, moving on to the Community Services Department 2020 work plan. We have a motion?
That the committee of the whole receives staff report CS 202017, Community Services Department Work Plan, November 2020.
Thank you. Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So basically, in the administrative side, we've been sitting down with our contractor that takes care of the refrigeration plants and we've been going over each piece of equipment, both in Maxwell and the Glengarry Sports Palace, to put an asset management piece together that is going to be able to help us support our capital asks in the future. So we actually identified each piece. We have their serial number for it and we have the lifecycle of the piece of equipment. So this is also going to plug into our management asset plan that we have to produce by 2022. In respect to training, we're undergoing a lot of training presently. We've had several members take the Legal Awareness One course. We have had virtual training on the Accessibility for Ontario's and Disabilities Act and also workplace violence and harassment training. So we do these refreshers periodically and we happen to line them up with our new part-time staff that have come in either at the Dome or at the Glengarry Sports Palace. So we want to ensure the safety of our young workers. In respect to committee and working group activities, staff has participated in the Community Development Committee as well as the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, and we present those minutes to council monthly. In respect to activities and events that occur in our facilities, the Boys and Girls Club was supposed to start up in October. Unfortunately, they've had issues hiring staff for that activity and it's on pause right now until they can get a person to come in and work with the youth. Also, another thing that has been a little bit difficult is that their group is now restricted to less than 10 individuals. So we were working with them initially to be able to extend the hours in which they could use our facilities. But as I mentioned, due to staffing issues, we've had to pause that program. In respect to the Canada Day activities, we have returned, or actually we returned an email indicating that we will not be using the funds that were intended for us for the 2020 July 1st activities. Due to the restrictions that are in place, it would be really difficult to put together those activities which were initially reported to February 2021. But on the bright side, we've already submitted an application for July 1st, 2021, and we're looking at moving some to a platform that would be virtual, similar to what was done with the Grotto concerts last year. So we've put in an ask for that and we hope to hear back in early January on that item. Sports ball was canceled. As we mentioned, part of the staffing was coming from the Quebec side. So there, there were some challenges with that and we also had low registration for that activity. On the bright side, yoga, yoga programming has been fantastic. We've had a great uptake with that. Unfortunately, due to the restrictions that came in place on October 24th, we've moved to a Zoom platform. We were forced to move to a Zoom platform, but it's been extremely well-received by our participants. So what we did is we contacted the users that we knew would have issues with internet or are more senior users that might not be as comfortable using Zoom technology. And we've offered them the tent spaces upstairs of the Glengarry Sports Palace and we stream to all of the other participants. So three times a week, our participants have access to the yoga classes on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. So the uptake has been fantastic and we get, keep getting very positive comments back from the group. So in the future, no matter what, we will continue to zoom the yoga classes because it offers participants two ways of joining the class, either in person or through the Zoom portal. In respect to our facilities and the closures due to COVID or the changes due to COVID, we have been sending regular emails also to our municipal recreation associations because they are also impacted at the same level as the township is with the restrictions. We met with the representatives from the different MRCs on Monday night in person. We had a meeting upstairs at the Glengarry Sports Palace. We discussed the different capital projects. We discussed the impacts of COVID, their operating costs, and we also discussed the transfer of funds as we usually do at year end from remaining capital funds where they could be used possibly for one of the other associations. And there's going to be an ask that will be coming to the next council meeting in that respect. So we continue moving forward with repairs and regular maintenance at our facilities. And if you turn to the table that speaks to the activities in the Maxwell Sports Complex, you will see, and those were figures that, that were only up to last week, you'll see that at, for that one month period, we had 291 walkers. And I did want to mention that the people that come in and register for pickleball are coming earlier and earlier. We have the times that they're registering. So we can see that they're coming earlier. And what's happening there is that they're walking around using the walking track prior or after their pickleball activities. So we're really pleased that people are not only coming in specifically just from one activity, that they're using more than one of the opportunities that are offered by the multi-sports pad. So again, you know, Jerome has been great with this conversion and he's been a real ambassador in the community about getting, getting the word out there, as well as Samantha Dexter, our program coordinator. In respect to the Dome, as you know, we've been open since August and you have the statistics on usage there. And overall, I must say that October has been a, a pretty consistent month when it comes to usage. It was a little bit slow at the beginning. We opened up fully in September and now we see that with the colder weather, we're getting more and more people coming through that facility. Regarding the Community Improvement Plan, you'll be pleased to know that we have a couple of applications coming to the next meeting and that five of the applications that were submitted to the Regional Incentives Program that's at the county's level were approved. So again, that's thanks in large part to Terrick Patrick, our Economic Development Officer. She works very closely with those businesses to bring forward those applications to the counties. We keep attending various meetings. Most of them are virtual. A lot of them are with the different organizations like the BDC or with different ministries, speaking to all of the different funding opportunities. Township staff has been working on a shop local campaign that will be launched on November 25th, and that is working jointly with the radio campaign that the counties will be promoting. And we also have posted this shop local campaign in the review. So not only in the Glengarry News, but in the review to try to encourage businesses here in our area. I'm pleased also to report that the Light Up North Glengarry campaign was initiated. The details of this contest were published in last week's Glengarry News, as well as this week's Glengarry News. And I'm told that registration is a risk. It is open not only for residences, but also for not-for-profits and commercial businesses. So we hope to see a great number of individuals registered for that or applications for registry. We keep moving forward with different press releases, with website updates, as well as Facebook updates. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. Okay, any questions from members of council? Councilor Manley?
You? Thank you. Thanks, Anne, for your report. I'm just, I'm wondering about, I know with the Light Up North Glengarry, we'll obviously be putting up our, our snowflakes on, on our streets and in our hamlets. Are we doing anything in Island Park or the lights going up in Island Park or what's happening with that?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. The lights are going up in Island Park. So K Mac are donating two days to us again to put up the lights in the park. And we're, we'll be decorating the building as well as decorating the trees at the front of the park. But we've also issued a little challenge to other departments to try to have them decorate their facilities. I know that staff in the recreation facilities have already trying to, are already planning on, you know, outshining, literally outshining each other, excuse the pun. So I think that that's going to bring a little bit of joy also.
Fantastic. Thank you, Anne.
That's great. Councilor Massey?
Yeah, great, great report. And just, just on the decorating of the businesses and reaching out to businesses, I know I, at the mail, like I, my two employees this morning mentioned the fact that we should decorate to participate in the decoration for Christmas in Alexandria. But, and I asked them, where did you see that? She saw it on Facebook. And so I said, okay, well, I didn't see it because I'm not really too many, too many, I don't really look at Facebook that often. But would it be very expensive to contact the, contact the businesses like with a, with a mailing or something? Just, we should have a list of businesses and all these programs, the local, the CIP program and everything like that. I know because I'm on council, but if I wouldn't be on council, I would, a lot of these programs escape me because I, I don't receive any like art, art copy letter explaining all this, you know what I mean? And like, if I would have seen or get in contact with Terra or some of the, there's a Christmas thing going on or something. Because for people that don't go on Facebook and don't read the Glengarry News, I know maybe I'm a little bit too much in the bush here, but it'd be nice to have a formal letter like sent out to them. I'm sure it's not that hard because we have all the business's name, but is that, would be something possible for next season or something?
Let me see what we can do on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Madden?
Just like that, a little something here. Chamber of Commerce.
I don't receive anything from them either. Take, take a note of that there, Mike.
Okay, any further comments? See, oh, go ahead, Councilor Noble?
Just a quick thing. I had been talking to Anne yesterday, and that's when she told me that she had already been talking to the rec groups. I was hoping, this is from a conversation with Jacques a while ago, that we could encourage the rec groups to get the outdoor rinks going. Obviously, we have to wait for Mother Nature, but just if we can promote them a bit more this year because, not only because we only have the, the one ice in the arena, but just that this is going to go on for a while. And if we're stuck at home and we need encouragement to get outside, this would be a great one. So whether it's, you know, it doesn't have to be organized stuff, but just more skating. I know that, I now know that there's a seniors hour at GSP, which is fantastic. I've pushed that to my library crew. And if we can do stuff like that, just, you know, hey, when's the last time you skated? Well, this is here. You know, they have their own money and I get that. Just if that'd be something that maybe in January, we could, if, like I say, I assume this is going to keep going on for a while, but if we could get out there and, and push that a bit more. Just even ourselves, I mean, it doesn't have to be an official letter or official, just, you know, hey, did you know this? The rink is, I mean, the Thunderdome in Dulkeith, man, we're ready.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. We have been in touch with the Eastern Interior Health Unit specifically speaking about how to manage outdoor rinks and the, the warm-up sheds and the limitations because of those small spaces. So we did share all of that information with the, the different organizations, the two organizations that have the outdoor rinks. And they were pleased to be able to have that information, as well as different options on how to manage crowds or do crowd control. And during the meeting, there, there, there definitely is a will to want to advertise about the fact that we have outdoor arenas. And again, it's always that fine line between encouraging large, large groups because we do still have to limit the size of the groups and making sure that it's not people that are traveling from away coming to use those facilities. So it's a fine balance away. So it's a fine balance between both. But we will definitely be speaking to the fact that we have outdoor rinks and we're hoping Mother Nature is going to be kind to us so that we can get something on the pond this year.
Ooh.
Yes. Cross our fingers.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, will vote to accept this work plan report. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Moving on to item number three in the Community Services Department, 2021 budget preapproval to hire develop, development and marketing coordinator?
That the committee of the whole receives staff report CS 202015 and that the committee of the whole recommends that council preapproves the sum of $80,000 in the 2001, sorry, 2021 Economic Development Capital Budget to hire the development and marketing coordinator to implement the development and marketing strategy.
Perfect. Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council will recall, we brought a report to the last council meeting adopting the development and marketing strategy for the township. And one of the next steps that was identified by the Community Development Committee was the hiring of an individual to pursue the action plan. So what we're doing today is we're bringing up forward a report to discuss the opportunity to hire someone to fulfill these tasks. Our goal is to really hit with this project hard and to make sure that we're implementing it as quickly as possible, that we move on this as quickly as possible. So having this discussion today, and if it's accepted by the group, we would then bring it to council for approval at the next council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Councilor Wensick?
Just a comment. I know we've discussed in other council meetings our reluctance to add positions at this time, especially because of COVID. And we do have staff already working in the area of economic development that perhaps can't work to their full capacity because of COVID. And it might be an opportunity to then focus on marketing. So rather than adding an individual, I would be more in support of adding to a budget where you can contract marketing services at a much lower rate than a full-time staff position in order to reach out perhaps for media support or marketing in other ways where we could certainly stretch those dollars out as opposed to adding another staff member.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I've gone on record as saying I'm not, I'm not fond of pre approving items particularly outside of budget season, but this particular request is an important one. We, we have already invested in, you know, creating a significant document and accompanying, accompanying action plan with the development and marketing strategy. It is going to take time to get this plan off the ground. Development, you know, to go from, you know, imagining new housing to actually then seeing those new, new buildings occupied is going to be a number of years. And so we need to hit the ground running with this program. Joanne, the, there's not, there's no, there's no way that our existing staff can manage the, the details and the extensive work that's going to be required to get this plan off the ground. If we are not the major driving force behind the development plan, I mean, the municipal. If we are not the major driving force behind the development plan, then I mean the municipality by that, it won't, it, it won't get off the ground.
Sorry, Karma, what about at the county's level?
Excuse me, I'm, I'm not finished.
Yeah, sorry. I just didn't want to forget that point. The county's support as well.
So, so we need to be able to, like I said, hit the ground running with this. Our, our existing staff, as is laid out in the action plan, will complement and will work alongside this individual. It's only a one-year contract. But I do believe that if we don't invest in this, we will have created a, a development and marketing plan that, that will end up just sitting on the shelf.
Thank you. Going back to you, Joanne.
Sorry to interrupt as I, I also wondered about the county's level offering support perhaps because I'm sure they also would want to invest in marketing for our areas part of their strategic plan. And we've already invested in the cost of a plan, which means then it's easier for current staff to follow.
Do you want to reply to that? Either, yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, as council knows, this is a multi-level plan. So there is the contacts with the developers, working on the development of some properties in Maxville. So these are, it's not simply just a marketing plan. And right now, COVID especially has had a huge impact on the economic development staff. It's actually added to the workload instead of taking things away. Our businesses need an incredible amount of support and that is being supplied by the existing staff right now. And we are also realistic about the skills that that person will have. That, yes, we are, we will be working alongside and, you know, supporting all of the activities that will be happening in this file. Sometimes will be the lease, sometimes will be the support. But that individual will have a certain set skills that we don't have right now. So this is why we think that it's a very important to support, to hire that person and have them in place as early as possible. I'd just like to mention that the chances are that this person wouldn't come on board until January. So the monies would most likely only be spent in the year 2021. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can just remind me, this is a contract position, right?
Yes, it's a contract position and we broke it down per hour just so that it gave an idea of the amount of money overall. The individual may be working more at the beginning, less in the middle, more at the end, or vice versa. But presenting it on a per hourly basis gave council an idea of what the salary scale would look like.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Councilor Massey, then Councilor Noble.
Yeah, I'm along the lines a little bit of Councilor Wensick. I think if we look at two or three positions that we currently have in our staffing, they include, a lot of them have responsibilities and that are exactly like we, or the person we're looking for. And I don't think it's a, I know we have a good strategic plan in place, Karma and everything, but and we just received it. But I, I'm not, I'm completely against hiring another person to do that. I think we have the people that are there are doing a really good job. We put a, if I take the last five years of CIP, I think we did a lot, we're doing the right thing there at a reasonable cost to the taxpayers. $80,000 to me would go, I, I, I'd rather we pay the half a kilometer with that money or invest somewhere else than, than, than doing that right now. I don't think this year is the right year. If we do get the, we have the, we have the sewer system, the ongoing discussions. And if we ever happen to have that, I would say maybe next year, like for 2022. But the timing is not right to hire somebody that, basically, I've been mentioning that at council meetings and, I don't know, five years ago when we, we had those discussions and I was against economic development and stuff like that too, to a certain point. But I think we'd rather, I'd rather wait till we get the, we secure the funding. If ever the governments will allow us the funding for the sewer system, then we can develop a plan. Because right now, I think would be money, like we can't really do anything with it. And I, I, I do believe if we look at the definitions of the present staff, there's two or three of them that have these description in their job responsibility. So I'm, I'm against, I'm just saying.
I, I'm just going to quickly just jump in and just, we just spent $30 million putting water in Maxville. And we have yet to come up with any kind of plan. We don't have those skills within the current staffing. And I think it's a waste of, it would be a waste of our money to not move forward and try and build what we, what we can in Maxville. $80,000 will be a small amount of money when, if we can, if we can bring in a developer, bring in a developer, put them together with, with the right people in Maxville and, and start getting some building going. $80,000 will be, will be nothing in the grand scheme of things if we, if that, if that ends up happening. Councilor Noble.
Yeah, my comment, I hope the other four will kick in on too. It was just that this person was meant to be somebody with fresh eyes, somebody that does this all day long, a lobbyist per se, somebody that has the connections to find the developers, find the fine print, know the government people, the, the industries that need to be contacted, just somebody. Again, yeah, 80,000 sounds like a lot, but if they get something like another IHA or they get something like another plan like that, the money that we spent to get the, the company to do that development plan for us will just be another, another step in the right direction to, I don't want to say put Alexandra on the map, put North Glengarry on the map, get some more people out here and, and connect all the dots. I would say that would be the purpose of this job, this person.
Thank you. Councilor Manley, then Councilor Massey.
I think we can all agree that one of the most successful programs that we have run in North Glengarry in recent times is our Community Improvement Plan. We need to remember that that Community Improvement Plan was created by someone we hired from the outside to come in and develop that plan for us. And that was Kerry Strodmann. And that was, this is exactly the same thing. We, we hired Kerry to come in and develop a plan for us, a great plan that we've had so much success with. I think the same thing is going to happen with hiring somebody to come in and take our marketing plan and move it forward. That's my thoughts on this.
Thank you, Councilor Manley. Councilor Massey.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jeff. We did replace Kerry with Tara, if you recall. And then, and then to respond to you, Mr. Mayor, I've been hearing about the Maxville and, you know, you want to attract people that we got the water, we spent 30 million there. I was sold the same thing two years ago too, when we hired our planner. And I still to this day didn't see a, like urban planning, planner. I was sold on the idea that she was going to, like, make sure that the urban design of Maxville and the possibilities that are there were going to be put on a, a piece of template or something. Still haven't seen that.
That's not a, that's not what her job is. Her job is to be a planner. And, and to, it's, it's not her job to go out and get people to come and invest in, in our.
No, I know, but she, she has to, she has, she was, I was sold on the thing that she was going to do a plan for, to put like these housings there and these housings there, you know, like.
We have to have developers first, Councilor Massey, to move that forward. Councilor Madden?
We know that there's interest in moving Maxville forward. There's, there's residents, there's taxpayers there who have land and there is interest. We need somebody to get them in touch with the people that are going to make this happen for them. They don't have the means to get it done. They have the land to do it, but they don't have the means to get it done. And this, the, the scale that can happen there, I think is, I, I go back to your comment about it's a drop in the bucket. I mean, 80 grand, when we're talking about a development of, I'm going to say 50 to 100 houses within, I'm going to go out on a limb and say maybe five years. That's a pretty small investment as far as the potential return.
Any further comments from members of the committee at this time? Councilor Massey?
Yes, no, that's okay. Nope, I'm good.
Okay, anybody else? So we do have a motion. Can you read that motion again?
Sure. That the Committee of the Whole receives staff report COTWCS 2020-15 and that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council pre-approves the sum of $80,000 in the 2021 Economic Development Capital Budget to hire the Development and Marketing Coordinator to implement the Development and Marketing Strategy.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Anne.
Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to Building, Planning and Bylaw Department, Hobby Farm Housekeeping Zoning Bylaw Amendment.
That the county, that the council of the township in North Glengarry receives staff report BP 2020-30 and provides staff with direction to proceed with the proposed housekeeping zoning by law amendment.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, this report, as just mentioned, is really, we're, we're looking for direction from council to lead with the, with the proposed housekeeping zoning by law amendment. So what it interests in Hobby Farm in the township of, I, I believe I have explained to council before the way our zoning by law works right now. Hobby farms are defined, but they are only permitted in rural zone properties that are at least 7.4 acres. Or because a hobby farm is an agricultural use, they are also permitted on agricultural lands. But these lands, the properties that are zoned agricultural needs to be at least 74 acres. So it's, it's quite a large property for someone who is zoned agricultural to have a few cows, goats, chickens, whatever hobby farm they want to have. So what we're proposing here, we, we looked into what other townships had as far as hobby farms. Some are a lot less restrictive, some are pretty much like we are right now. Most of them are less restrictive. So what we are proposing here is that instead of allowing hobby farms only in rural properties that are 7.4 and ag that are 74, we want to make the change to any property that is zoned rural or general agricultural to be allowed to have a hobby farm if they are more than five acres. So all the properties basically outside of, of town that is on rural mag, if they are more than five acres, they could have a hobby farm. And the way we want to word that hobby farm definition, we want it to be to a maximum of five nutrient units. So what five nutrient units really is, is a calculation of the manure you produce on your hobby farm. So the, the, the minimum distance separation documents allows a, let's call it a hobby farm to have up to five nutrient units before they have to apply for a nutrient management, management strategy. And before township staff has to apply the minimum distance separation to, to ensure the distance to the neighbor's dwelling, to the property lines, front property line, et cetera. So we were looking at like prating, prating the, the size of the properties with the amount of animals and blah, blah, blah. But this just seems like it's easier to enforce. So basically, if you're five acres or more, you're allowed to have five nutrients, up to five nutrient units on, on your hobby farm. If you want to have more than five nutrient units, as mentioned in the report, we would apply a minor variance. And we would, just like we're doing now, basically, would apply my variance and all the other zoning restrictions would apply. So we would like setbacks and whatnot would apply for this. So basically, we're, we're just looking into that right now. We're looking to see if council has any entrance, interest, sorry, in allowing these, these hobby farms.
Councilor Massey.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So on, let's say somebody buys a 10-acre farm and that wants, just maybe explain or maybe terrified that five nutrient units, it's not five chickens because five chickens can't be one unit each. So like this is like cattle or horses, like the one unit nutrient management. But make sure, just explain then, like maybe explain to people that are listening in that five chickens is not five, five units.
Yeah, just, yeah, exactly. You know, you're totally right. So if, if we could, we, we could put the exact, like these numbers all come from that document that's, that's done by OMAFRA. And one nutrient unit, just to put it in perspective, one nutrient unit is equal to one horse or one large cow. And these would be the, the biggest animal. So the, the, let's say chickens, I don't know how many exactly there are, but I think it's close to like 30 or 50 chickens per nutrient unit. So it's, it's still a lot of chickens. A hobby farm can be a lot of animals and it can be a mix and match of all the animals. It's just the, the, the problem where like, this is like, I'm, I'm for that because we're getting that request. I don't know how many times a year. The, the, our, our biggest problem in North Glengarry for hobby farms is horses. Because you have people that have a nice, nice building and a nice barn. They have two, three horses, they have a hobby farm and it's all good. The, the next person who buys the property thinks that they have a livestock facility. So they will bring in five, seven, eight, 10 horses. And by the time we go by, the neighbors have complained, they have na, na, na. There's, there's a lot of, so it's, it's just easier to, to enforce nutrient units than to, to enforce the number of animals. So that's why we're going with that. Yes, you're right, Jacque. It is a little bit more complicated, but like, yeah, one cow is equal to one nutrient unit. And I believe five, five goats or five sheeps is one nutrient unit. So it all goes like that. Yeah.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, I'm really happy to see this. This is, it's great. Thank you. Thank, thank Kasia for that. I think it's a step in the right direction. And I know that part, well, from my perspective anyway, partly this kind of came out of, you know, some of those agricultural severances that we've been seeing. So I guess what that means is that, you know, we'll have to kind of keep an eye on the requested amount, number of acres that for, for severance in, in order to be able to hopefully, if it looks like, you know, that piece of land is a good candidate for a potential hobby farm that, 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 you know, we, we actually a lot or encourage the owner to allot enough land to it to actually enable a hobby farm if the, if the new purchaser, you know, wanted one. So I guess, I guess it goes part and parcel with, with that. Is that correct?
Yeah, we had that discussion. And I, I guess we, it was more called an argument than a discussion when we had it because we're like, we're, we're going to have the, if we're, and I agree with you for severances, like the, right now, we're not the approval authority. So the counties, they want to, to keep it, well, the county, the official plan says it has to be kept to a minimum size. So what I was like, what I was saying is exactly like you said, if we have a property that is, let's say, five acres and the official plan says that if you do a severance in agricultural lands, the, the, the portion that has the house on it has to have a zoning amendment to prohibit any agricultural activity on the property. So this is where we would be like, I'm, I'm not, we'll, we'll check into that and ensure that it's all done properly. But it's like, we're doing a bylaw that's, that's, in this case would be against the, well, not against, but would be indifferent with the official plan. So we'll have to review that for, for sure. Yes. Yeah.
Subsequent question?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, Jacob, yeah, I agree. It, it is a little bit complicated because there's a bit of a, I see the conflict there you're referring to. But at County Council, we did discuss this. And Ben DeHahn was, I would say, in theory, you know, supportive. And, and the planner, the contracted planner also, he said that, you know, they understand how come we, we would like to sort of go this direction. And so what they, what they said to us was just make sure that the township is communicating with the county early on in terms of the, the intention, that maybe it looks like we're asking for something that is outside of the, the regulation, but that some flexibility would be appreciated in this instance, given, given what we're trying to accomplish. And he said, as long as the township steps in early and, and, and asks for that, for them to work with us. And he said, as long as the township steps in early and, and, and asks for that, for them to work with us, that, that it should be, it should be, you know, for the most part, doable.
Yeah, yeah. And yeah, absolutely. But a, as far as this is concerned though, this is really a housekeeping by law for, for our zoning by law. So for, for, yeah, we will have to get them involved for severances and stuff for sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jacob, this, does this include only on the zone agricultural land? Or this affects the rural designation?
It, it, it doesn't affect, well, it does affect the rural lands also because instead of the minimum being seven point four, the minimum would also be brought down five acres. Five acres for either ag or rural land.
Okay. And I know the, these and I know with this
Hey, Jacob, we're losing you.
Can have a hobby farm, but
You're back.
I didn't hear your question. Sorry. I guess mine. Yeah.
Jaco, did you want to finish up?
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. That's okay. I'm good. Yeah. Thanks. Thanks. I think it was happy hour at the, for Jacob there. He's kind of slow.
Only concern that I'd add into this is about wells. And really it would be for neighboring properties. And more so dug wells than drilled wells. But maybe consider something in there about having to do to at least know where neighboring wells are. Make sure that there is a fifteen meter difference for a distance from the property line of the proposed hobby farm to a neighboring well, whether it's dug or drilled. Just because if we reduce the size on this, we're, I mean, even with five nutrient units, we're obviously concentrating animals in a smaller space, there is potential there for, for contamination of drinking water. So it's just as long as we know where they are, they're not too close. Something to consider in there.
Okay, yeah, we can check it out. Yeah, we can check it out for sure. The, the limit for the five nutrient unit is a little bit for that to protect the neighbors for sure. And there is also a minimum distance from the property line to your well. So technically, if your well is, is positioned as per, until you're building gold on your property, you shouldn't be affected by that. But yes, we can definitely check because as, as you know, a lot of wells are not as per code. So yeah, we can definitely check into that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Council Noble.
One last question, Jacob. It's just to make sure that if you, once you pass this by law, if you have five acres and you're in a rural zone, you're good to go. There's no minor variance needed. There's no, well, not permit, but there's no, you can be a hobby farm.
Exactly, yes.
Is it still seventy-four?
No, it would be brought down to five acres also. Yeah, and, and the whole reason behind that is because right now, if you're zone agricultural, you can't even have a hobby farm. Where if you're going rural, you can have a hobby farm if you're only seven point four. So there, there's, there's kind of something odd about this. So we're just trying to make it all, all even for all. Because most of the properties outside of the towns and the settlement areas like Delk Heath and Greenfield, most of these properties are zoned either agricultural or rural. So it includes a, a, a lot of properties outside of town. Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to twenty twenty work plan.
That the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives after report BP twenty twenty thirty-one. The Director of Building Bylaw and Planning two thousand and twenty work plan.
Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, there's not a whole lot of, of changes. It's, it seems like I say that every month. It's gonna start sounding like we're not doing anything in our department, but we're working, I swear. So the, I guess in this, in this report here, the, the important change or the important update would be in the Maxwell Water Project. So as I mentioned at the last count, as the last, come in the whole meeting, we are up to date with our inspections. So you have the numbers right there. These numbers were brought by, brought to us by Angela. So I, I thank her a lot for that. She's keeping track of everything in there. So we have one hundred and forty-one inspection, inspections done and completed at this time. There's, and here it says three, but there's actually four inspections that, that are in process. And then the, the next one in process, not connected. These are all the ones that the people actually brought the water line inside the house, but are not yet connected. So we have forty-five like that. Until now, we have relied on the owner's word that it's not connected. The most of, I would assume that most of the connected meters, they would tell us. It does match with, with the plumber's list that they gave us. So anyway, we have about forty-five like that. And then there's a hundred and seventy-two that up to now have no actions on the property. So that's where we are. As you can see, we're pretty much close to fifty percent done. So it's going well and things were, I know we have distributed some, some information letters and stuff like that. So it should get things moving a little bit. I hope so anyways. Right now it's going well because, well, it was going well also before COVID. But when, like, when, when that hit, we just stopped doing inspections. So now we're doing them as soon as they come in. So if you, if you get the question by, by your member, you can definitely tell them to call us. But as soon as they do, we will do their inspection. They shouldn't be waiting a long time. So that's, that's good for that. We're up to date with this. Other than that, we're up to
Okay, thanks. I did, just before you get too far into the other stuff, I have water. Yay.
You're, you're, you're the fourth one that I just added, by the way.
I just a question with, two questions, actually. The, the, the ones, the forty-five that are, where the water line is run, is in the residence, but not yet connected. Now, why would that be? Like, why would they not put the water on?
Yeah, because like, for example, on Marlborough Street is a good example. When, and there I know it was Dave Solway. So he's doing like four houses in a row. So what he did is when he had the excavator there, he just brought all the lines into the house because it's not long to do that. You just have to dig the hole in the yard, tear up the person's yard, bring the, bring the, the, the water line in. And then because they were really busy in the summertime, they just brought in the line and they told the people, I can do the rest when it's winter time, anytime, because we're gonna be inside and whatnot. So there's a lot of them that it's that. I think Roland kind of did the same thing with a lot of properties. But yeah, mo-most of them, it's because of that. It's just because they didn't have the, the chance to do that. So when, I don't remember who was doing the work in town in Maxwell, but some, some people's yard were already all destroyed. So they said, well, we might as well bring the excavator there. Dig the trench right now, put the line in and we'll deal with the rest later. So these are these forty-five.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. The other question is, is, it says here that no action that, that the area of Campbell Crescent is, is an exception. I don't know, maybe you can't answer that, but maybe Dean can. I, I thought Campbell Crescent, didn't they get sewer at the same time as water and, and is, is the sewer not hooked up? Maybe Dean can answer that.
I don't think it is. I can check with Dean. I can definitely, unless he's here, I don't know.
Thank you. Yeah, Campbell Crescent, they're, they have a new sanitary in there too. So what they're gonna do is hook up the sanitary and the water at the same time. It's a bigger project than just the water. So he's gonna wait till next spring to do most of those.
Okay, so that's why that area is an exception. Okay, I was just curious. Thank you very much.
Okay, Jacob, continue.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, so yes, building permits were again pretty, keeping same pace as last year. We have a, a few larger projects than last year, like the, the new gym at Butchers to Go, the two eight unit flex and the Benson, Benson and Alexandria. Their larger projects will be the number values a little bit more, but the amount of permits is pretty much the same. Other than that, planning the IHA project. So they have submitted their zoning by law application. So the, our planner and the counties are currently working on that. Draft cutting, through cutting by law. The planner is also updating the by law according to the changes that were made at the few last meetings. The LPAD appeal that we had. So what, what they said is that it could take up to eight weeks to get the result. Eight weeks is November twenty-fourth. So I don't know if we're gonna get the, the, the result for that. But Mr. Suter knows about, about the, the November twenty-four and the long wait. So he's aware of that, that taking a long time. Besides that, I think, yeah, everything is, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jacob. Are there any further questions for Jacob? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to Public Works Department, Work Plan Update twenty twenty.
That the Committee of the Whole receives report PW twenty twenty twenty-eight. Public Works Work Plan Update, November twenty twenty for information purposes only.
Welcome, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we'll start with the Roads Department. All the plows have the harnesses and plows on, ready to go. They were out on November second and third to go for, to deal with some icing conditions. When we did the road tour, we went by Sky Road and we showed you where they changed that culvert and the width of it. So last week, our staff went out and put in some cement barriers to widen that portion. Some pictures of that where they winded. It was a joint effort between the two municipalities. So we supplied the manpower and back home and they supplied the material. They covered the cost and material for that, for that job. Sandfield sidewalks, they were meant to be replaced this fall. They're blaming COVID that they can't do it right now. So they're gonna hold off until the spring, but they're gonna be honoring the price that they gave us. And hoping in the spring, early spring, they'll be doing it. And on the sidewalk, staff was asked to look into doing a sidewalk study. So we met with, we contacted another municipality and they gave us a contact of who does, who did their sidewalk study. So we contacted them and it gives a presentation, PowerPoint presentation on what's all entailed in the, in the study. So I think it's a good idea to go ahead and do a study. We've done some over the last few years, but it's all in-house staff. So thought it'd be good to have a third party complete one for us. So we budgeted some money for twenty twenty-one to have that then. Speeding issues, kind of a hot topic. So we met with S E G's county staff and we reviewed their policy that they have. So what they do when they have a complaint, they go out and investigate and they have a template that they populate to fill out some numbers and put in some criteria in there and it spits out what should be followed. And by that, they decide whether it needs further investigation or if they need to look at the speed, uh, speed limit in that area. So we're gonna be looking into doing that also. We have that spreadsheet now. So we have, next complaints we have, we'll be looking into that. For training, four of our road staff are in training this week on graders. So each staff member, there is one day a classroom, full day classroom to get the basics. And then each operator will have two days of seat time where they'll be one-on-one with the instructor. And they'll be going up and down a few roads in the township and they start off with a core to get places. And that'll give them some experience and some good knowledge or so. And the water department, all the hydrants are prepped, ready for winter, the valve and check, make sure there's no water in them and winterize. The water plant, all the upgrades are mostly done. There's a few little items left to do, some doors. I need some insulation and strip weather shipping to be done. In Maxwell, Jake was mentioning, two of the most important ones have been done now, deputy mayor. And the manor is also been hooked up. So they're a big consumer. So that's really, really helpful for us. And in my report, we said we haven't had any water breaks recently. So that has changed. We do have a small water break, we think, at the corner of Kenyon and McDonald Boulevard. So we're gonna be looking at that one tomorrow. So hopefully it's nothing too serious. And on Sunday, there is a planned power outage, hydro have a planned power outage. So the staff have gotten all the generators and pumps ready, set up. They'll be all set up Sunday morning early to run the pumps while the power is off.
Perfect. Thank you. Council Massie.
Dean, I went by the, the tower in Maxwell Monday night. And there, apart from that little red light on top, there was no lights at all of the tower. Is that normal or?
And I can't remember how many lights. There is definitely one aviation light up there.
Yeah, there's, there's just that little red one. What I thought that, that last year, there was flashing up. I, I thought that the tower was lit up at night.
Three from, Mr. Mayor, you mean from the ground up?
Yeah, well, or like, or something like the Alexandria one.
Three, Mr. Mayor, we have no lights from the ground pointing up.
But it seems like it's more lit than, anyways, I just thought. I know there's a little red bulb on the top of it, but that's about it.
Okay, any further questions? Yeah, council mainly.
Yeah, just a comment or whatever. I know it's easy in these times or whatever to sort of sit back and let, let training things go. It's nice to hear staff today talking about training for our, our gravel, grader drivers and also to Anne talking about in recreation and, and community services going ahead with training. I think that's, that's fantastic.
Yeah, no, for sure. Any further comments? Council Massie.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Dean, maybe on the sixth, where the new, where the sinking portion is that we replaced last year or the year before. I noticed that the water is just about to go to, over the road there, that culvert. So maybe I think there's either a beaver dam somewhere or it's just about, if you go through tomorrow, we'll just look at it. Because it's just about going over the road there and it might cause some irrigation or some
Yes, I think we're on that already. We have a trapper already dispatched for that one.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Dean. Moving on to the Fire Department, twenty twenty work plan. We have a motion.
That the Committee of the Whole receives staff report FD twenty twenty twelve, the Fire Chief's two thousand and twenty work plan update.
Welcome, Chief Roy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update, nothing too significant in terms of from the last in terms of the communication project phase three is all completed. We just have, we're completing some tests right now with the paging. We're gonna be making some slight modifications at both the Alexandria site and Maxwell to improve the coverage area of our pagers for all our members. All the pages are ready to be deployed as soon as that's completed. So we'll, we'll be fully operational in terms of, so this, this has changed our frequency and our, our ability and coverage in some areas that never had coverage previously. So this is gonna be a significant change for our members moving forward. Along with that, Bearcom is currently conducting a propagation study to determine a wireless link to dispatch. This is to resolve some issues that we currently experience with our internet service provider. That, so we have some lack of communication or some breakdowns sometimes due to, as we all know, internet. And we've experienced a little more higher issues during COVID due to the higher amount of people utilizing the internet. So going this route is actually gonna make us independent and being able to operate in a public safety type of fashion where there's no impacts or any impacts with ISPs. So there'll be more information to follow on, on that aspect. There'll be another aspect or another portion of the project for communication. Training facility, work is continuously ongoing. Uh, training facility, um, work is continuously ongoing, um, that progressing very well for that. Uh, we have received um some sponsorships from um various businesses within the community to assist with this project, so that was very positive. Uh, and the money, the funds will be very, uh, will be put to use for training for all our members, uh, with. In that train facility. Uh, aerial trucks, uh, it's undergone the mechanical safety and it passed everything and emissions, so uh the vehicle is now plated. We're scheduling ladder testing to be certified in the coming weeks, uh, we're gonna be starting uh operator and um. Training with the small cohort of firefighters and will be expanding uh as we, as you go along with the uh, with the training program with that. Cornell Dispatch has been advised of our new apparatus and um they've imported into their system, so they're aware of um. Of the equipment that we currently have and been updated on that front. In terms of uh this apparatus being utilized for mutual aid at this time, um. It it will not be utilized for any mutually calls, um. This will be a discussion that we'll have um long term in terms of where we want to position this vehicle in terms of its abilities. Um, recruitment, we've uh completed our recruitment drive um for uh twenty twenty, we're gonna be hosting. Orientation and testing uh this Saturday. Uh, once uh the the testing and everything's complete, um, we're gonna be hiring eight to ten new recruits. Uh, across all the three stations. Uh, once they're hired, uh, they'll be enrolled in the one-year program. Will um, um, be brought up to speed in terms of their certifications and then. Uh, there'll be full-fledged firefighters after about a one-year. Uh, in terms of auto aid agreements, um, we are uh making some progress in terms of establishing and regulating uh bylaws. This is a significant um document in terms of moving forward in terms of uh what would provide the the township. So due to many changes that we've kind of gone through this year, uh, this will give us a good aspect in twenty twenty-one to come forward with a bylaw. Uh, that's utilized in terms of uh what we deliver in terms of the fire service for the township. Uh, in terms of uh COVID update, uh, we continue with the same procedures, um. And protocols, our training continues, uh. Recommend date, keeping in line with the recommendations. For um prevention and inspections are. Fire prevention officer continues to conduct uh inspections at all the vulnerable occupancies, um. Coming in line with the communicate that was developed by the Fire Marshal's Office, so we are conducting the inspections, but the actual drills. There's, uh, we're uh using alternative measures to conduct and to achieve compliance um for twenty twenty. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you, there any questions for Chief Roy? Deputy Mayor Williams.
Uh, thanks for your report, um, Matt, I I just a question about the training facility, uh, I take it, it it's not up and running quite yet?
Yeah, so um, it's, it's, it's fully operational in terms of what it is, is that right now, it's uh interior is being constructed inside. Uh, so these are shipping containers that are uh put together, so the train facility is being used, it's being used even for a water source currently for um. The district of uh Apple Hill. Um, and, but the the exterior of the building can be utilized uh for various training, we just didn't want to move into until it's uh fully completed. Uh, and done inside, so uh, we're not conducting any training inside at this time, no.
And, and so uh, when do we get a tour?
Yeah, as soon as it's done, hopefully, yeah.
Okay.
A hundred percent, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, any further questions, Councilor Noble?
Yeah, just a quick one, um, very excited about the aerial truck, and then I was also curious, have you guys gone back to helping out on paramedic calls? Or are you still in your? You're just doing the firefighting stuff, so you guys don't mingle?
Yeah, so uh, the STG, or City of Cornell and STG Paramedic Service still remains on a uh, the tiered response is uh unchanged since March. Um, we do not respond, we're not uh in the tiered response at this time. Uh, we continue to have discussions on this front, um, however, it's uh. We always, we always look forward to kind of getting back into that environment, we're prepared, we have the equipment and PPE to be able to provide that. To the township as always, uh, the measures are in place for our members to ensure that the safety is there, but again, the uh STG uh parameters. Uh, they do trigger us whenever there is a a requirement to do it based on certain factors, so. Um, it's, it's always open for more uh conversation as, as we progress with COVID.
Thank you, any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Chief Roy. For the motion, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, okay, so we'll move on to uh items arising from the standing committee. Uh, Maxwell Manor, Councilor Massey, any update?
Yeah, we had our board meeting, we met with the new CA, CPA, AOA, Amy Portis, a very uh. Likeable person, very organized, and we did the. Uh, and they, as it, as Dean mentioned, we did, they did connect to the, the Maxwell Water uh early this week or last week or something. And uh, they're very, very happy and uh, we're moving on the, uh, moving on as the. With the new CEO, she's putting in uh new policies in place, so I think everything. The, the atmosphere is pretty uh, it's better, it's getting better.
Great, thank you, uh, Glengarry Pioneer Museum, Councilor Noble.
I'm just writing my notes, um, so uh, the last couple of meetings have been Zoom, so the AGM will also be a virtual. They should have held it in the spring, and that's right when the. This all started, so they're just figuring out how that's gonna work, because they're always looking for new members. Um, Halloween was a good success, so they were trying something, not similar, obviously, but they're trying something um. For a Santa Claus visit, so they're working out the the issues about how you can go see them, but not touch them, but still get candy, but not be near them and still take pictures. And um. Then what else were they trying to do? Oh, um, closing up, closing up for the season. Um, the movie should, it doesn't have an air date, but it is called Christmas at Maple Creek. They'll keep watching for that, not sure if it's gonna be a lifetime or a hallmark, and um. Oh, I'm still working on um adding stuff to their collection, so that's still going, and they're always looking for help with that.
Great, thank you, any questions for Councilor Noble? Thank you. Uh, Arts, Culture and Heritage, Councilor Manley.
Yeah, not a whole lot, most of it's been covered sort of in our, our meetings here today, uh, the only thing maybe is the applications for community grants in the new year. Um, that kind of thing, so that's about it right now.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Williams, County Council.
Yes, we had a meeting on Monday, uh, I guess two of, I'll just cover two of the highlights, um. There was a uh, the Economic Development Department had a presentation on. Um, the strategic plan for the counties, uh, the economic development, a strategic plan that is. As well as a uh report on the review of the regional incentive program. Uh, as you know, the regional incentive program is a complimentary program to our, all of the lower tiers CIPs. It is an exceptionally um successful program. Uh, in all of the, um, it provides incentives for anywhere from renovating vacant buildings to uh. Passade improvements, to trail improvements, to uh, uh, all kinds of things, and, and uh. The, so, so the review was great, and there are some recommendations uh that came out of it to improve the program. Um, the return on investment is, is eight to one uh for the, for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that the counties puts into the program every year, they get returned eight times uh on, on those dollars, so. It is a, it is a huge program, and then there was also a discussion on rural school strategy. Uh, and the county's is, is on. Uh, uh, Mayor McDonald is chairing that committee, and they're moving forward on a, on a, a regional strategy for schools.
Okay, thank you, and uh, moving on, sorry, just. Uh, we have uh Friends of the Trails, Councilor Wincink, any report?
Um, so the last meeting was by Zoom, it was noted that the Facebook page doesn't make it obvious that the trails are, they have a charitable status, so they want to upgrade that information. They want signage to show that the green road is a multi-use trail in winter for snowmobiles. And they developed a planning committee to look at documenting procedures that need to be updated. And of course, they're always looking for new membership, if anyone's interested, there's no December board meeting, but they'll meet again in January.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Uh, Community Development, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, so as you just heard during this meeting, we are moving forward, uh. Uh, trying to keep the momentum going with the development and marketing plan, and that's, that's really been the focus of the committee uh for the last little while.
Okay, great, thank you very much, thanks everyone for your reports, uh, that concludes our meeting, I believe. Um, so we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do, uh, so there being no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at four forty-four.
Those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you, everyone, uh, all members of the committee for joining us today, and thank you all, the staff and anyone that was watching on Facebook. Uh, have a great rest of your week, thank you.